Good afternoon, Hayden, Idaho. I am calling to order a special city council meeting for the city of Hayden, Idaho. It is Tuesday, August 26, 2025, approximately 4:00 p.m. May we have a roll call of council members, please?
Council President Reuter.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
And we are going to do the pledge of allegiance now, so we don't do it at 5:00. Those that wish, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, our one and only item is an action item, which is to hopefully conclude our fiscal year 2026 budget planning. With that, I believe our city administrator Lisa is ready to present.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. What I have in front of you is a slide from the last presentation that it's the same presentation, we're just working through the process at this point. We're going to pick up where we left off, which is at the discussion of the council member's suggestions and then action on those. Between the last meeting and this meeting, we did receive a proposal from a council person regarding cuts that they would like to suggest be made. Not sure if you want the floor to provide that, but you will all give in a copy of those. I did send a revised copy to you guys this afternoon. I just want to acknowledge that the amounts are correct, but I had the wrong GL code on there. I just transcribed it wrong, so that's been corrected. And what you have in front of you is the appropriate GL code and name. That, Ms. Mayor, I guess it's up to you whether you'd want to give the floor to Councilmember De Priest.
Would you like, please? Sure. Ready? Okay, I hope everybody, it looks like everybody received the proposed roughly $68,752.28, which is pretty specific, not roughly, in cuts to the proposed budget for next year. If you look at them, I mean, you have travel and training, professional service, temporary contract labor, special projects engineering, on-call site planning, on-call building review, books and technical, special projects, street lighting, maintenance, signal maintenance, and CDL training and testing. I sat with city administrator for quite a while, going over each one of these lines and several others that we decided not to adjust before making these decisions and discussions. How I look at it is the money is there, the projected revenue is there, and that instead of going to these specific line items, they will end up, and correct me if I'm wrong, in our fund balance, okay, which is our reserve, our savings account, okay? And the idea behind these is, number one, to not take the 3%, to give the taxpayers a break here, this one year only, because I think down the road, we have some issues that is going to require us to go before the people again on the ballot to make some adjustments to our base tax rate regardless of what we do right here today. Some of you may have seen, and if you haven't, I would suggest you watch, it's on YouTube and other things, post-falls budget meeting last Tuesday, Councilmember Malloy went through about a 25-minute discussion related to something very similar to what we're doing today, related to their budget, specifically related to their fund balance, the reserve/savings account. And he made the analogy related to either a business or your own household, where you recognize that you're going to need new roof in the next five, six years. So is it prudent to wait for that roof to collapse or need repair, or is it prudent to save $6,000 a year for five years? Well, I agree with him in saying that you want to try and save, so that in five years you can replace that roof as expected. And so if you take your revenues and if you have surplus, you put it into your fund balance, your reserve or your savings in preparation for repairing the roof. And so with these adjustments to the proposed budget, how I look at it is this, we've reduced some of them, but the money is there so that if, let's say, a line comes up where that department comes to us and says, hey, we're out of money, you know, we use all our money, say, eight months down the road, and they can present their need, they can say, we need this money for X. Let's say, let's just say, we have some, which one did I want to pick here? On-site plant engineering help we need, and it's going to cost us $7,000. And they demonstrate the legitimate need for that help, they present it to the council, and the council hopefully says, yeah, we get it, and we have the funds there, so we appropriate the funds to take care of that issue. And it's really that line of thought with all of these proposed reductions, that the money is there, and if they come to us, that department comes to us down the road after they have expended this and present it to us and demonstrate the true need, that I hope that the council would recognize such and appropriate the money for that. So these changes that you see, I'm happy to answer any questions related to why, how, what, my thinking or whatever on them. And I would hope that we would approve these. It's roughly $68,000, which covers the 3%. And again, I'm going to be quite honest with the people about this, with the recognition that spurred by this law enforcement, county, what I'm going to call exorbitant, massive demand for not only this year, but in the next three to five years, we're going to need to go to the ballot anyway. And that's where the adjustment is probably going to be made related to our base tax.
Tom, questions for Ed?
I have one, Ed, it's.
Mom? Sorry, I started.
Oh, I'm sorry, you started at the.
I started portside, sorry.
The portside. I didn't hear that, sorry.
Okay, well, question for Councilman De Priest and/or for staff. So I'm glad to hear you went over this with the city administrator. My question first is probably directed at Lisa, which is, Lisa, has staff been able to weigh in on these cuts to say what they feel like, how it may impact their ability to do their jobs?
Yeah, we did, I did meet with the staff that was affected mostly by this, and some of them didn't hear about it until today just because of scheduling. And there were some comments, of course. The concern really is that, you know, they do their best, we all do our best to tell you what we anticipate we'll need. And while what Councilman De Priest said is accurate, as long as we don't exceed our appropriation amount that's within the ordinance that you pass, it does slow, cause a slowing of the engine, governmental engine that's already slow in some perspectives, to have to come back every time. So we do our best to try to plan out what that looks like, and I've challenged the staff to look at a longer timeframe. Let's look at three to five years, so we're not, every year we're truing up what that next ask is. And I think if I were going to summarize their comments, it would be simply that they do their best to provide you what they think they'll need, and we present that to you guys through the budget process, right? We don't come at it at the very end, we show you through the strategicness when we first meet, and then the iterative meetings after that.
Second question is, how would you or staff feel if you had to come back for asking for a new appropriation if you say you ran out of money?
Well, we certainly would do it. We would bring that to you guys, so we could ensure that the city meets its obligations and is promulgating the directions that council gives us. That said, you know, when we look at the way the law is written, it's very specific about the bottom-line number, so I don't anticipate that we'll exceed our bottom-line number. So we won't technically, in my opinion, have to go back through and do another appropriation ordinance. But we certainly are, when we budget things, we bring you the contract forward and we let you know it's been budgeted, so that way you guys can make an informed decision. If it's not been budgeted, then we have to come back and explain why it wasn't budgeted and provide the storyline as far as what we're trying to accomplish with that. So just, it's another, so it's another step in that process of getting it looked down.
Okay. And last question is, we've, every one of us has either verbally or with a nod of the head recognized that street maintenance is one of those issues where we seem to continually, continuously, year after year, fall behind. And I for one appreciate the fact that I'm not driving on potholes all the time in Hayden like I do in some of the other surrounding cities. Would any of these cuts impact that kind of process for the city?
No, but it doesn't gain us either, so.
Okay. Can you be more specific in that last question?
Sure. The, for example, council has taken on some lofty goals as far as updating the comprehensive plan, and as such, those other plans will need to be updated as well. So we look at some of the planning work that staff does in order to prepare the city for what we expect will happen in the next year. The professional services was an area that we identified as an area that needed some attention, so we could promenade the updates to the transportation plan as well as any other strategic planning related to the city's finances. So that will slow that process down, which would potentially slow down how we plan and update and maintain our streets, so.
I'm sorry, you made me think of one more thing that I wanted to ask about. So, Mr. Mayor, you can cut me off if you think I'm getting ahead of myself here, but I know we're going to be discussing one item in our city council meeting today having to do with planning and hiring temporary professional services for that. Would that be an example where we might, this might put a kibosh on that?
If we were going to continue that into next year, possibly, which would, it's just an opportunity for us to slow down government, which sometimes isn't a bad thing.
Yes.
But it's also a friction point that some recognize as being something they wish they'd see less friction in, so.
Okay. I'm done, Ms. Mayor, thank you.
Matt, you said, you sound like you had something?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this. I understand that we can't, we set a budget amount and we can't spend more than that, and if we do, we have to go through a whole, open up the budget. So with that in mind, these cuts will not trigger that as long as, if there's more money needed to fulfill one of these line items, as long as it doesn't increase our total budget, we don't have to open up our budget.
I want to be careful, I want to make sure I correct you and say, as long as you don't exceed your total appropriations.
Appropriations, yeah. So I've got that. I mean, we can, we have the ability to spend more on one line item here, as long as the appropriations don't exceed what we've adopted.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Sandy, do you have anything?
Yes, I was just going to comment that those, the first two items, the travel and training and the professional services, are items that I also brought up in the last meeting to be reduced, but not by quite that much. The goal of my reductions was to lower the base budget rate down to a 2% rather than 3% levy rate, and then to also retain the sheriff. And so these budget cuts are going to reduce the taxes people pay, but it does nothing in maintaining our bargaining power with the county over the sheriff and our contract. So I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse, and by cutting out what we can bargain with, with the sheriff, or can offer him, in order to say zero taxes, so.
So no questions?
So I don't agree with it.
May I ask a question to that comment?
If you want.
Yeah.
I didn't hear a question.
Yeah, I didn't hear a question either, but this issue with the sheriff and this councilmember White saying that it reduces our ability or our amount that we have to negotiate with, can I ask, what amount do you think that we should publish to negotiate with the sheriff? Should we put in, you know, $2 million, or what amount, if you had the wand, would you suggest that we put in the budget for the negotiation with the sheriff?
We approved a budget a couple weeks ago, and then in the last meeting, we slashed what we were going to offer the sheriff by $249,000, and also took out the $2,000 of interest that we could have also negotiated with, so.
It's $200,000, I believe.
Okay, so regardless of that, this Ed's proposal doesn't have the sheriff on it, and the matter over how much the city council decided to use as a placeholder in the budget for the county to negotiate law enforcement services was settled last meeting. So is there anything for this meeting that anybody, any other council member asked questions about?
Mayor, if I may, what's ticking in my mind, and I'm looking at the county, the Cooney County Sheriff vehicle, and we're budgeting $95,000 for lieutenant vehicle. If we do not go forward with hiring a lieutenant, because I have yet to see a job description on what this lieutenant will be doing for $180,000 or whatever the amount is, plus $95,000 for a car, if we don't negotiate lieutenant, could that $95,000 be used to offset a reduction of not having an increase in our taxes?
Are you asking me that question?
Matt, my answer is it's general fund.
Rather than talking about it from a tax perspective, we'd be talking about it from an expense perspective. What we want to see, what I would expect you to want to see of your staff is that if our revenues are going to exceed our expenses, that we have an explanation why, and that if we don't have to exceed our expenses, then we've not hit our fund reserve unless it's dictated by council to do so. So for example, this last year, we leaned on our reserve heavily as we navigated the year because the state withheld our sales tax revenue. And then when we were able to get that back, then we leaned on, we're leaning on our reserve now to complete a number of land sales that we're going through, both on the right-of-way transactions as well as future opportunity for the city to move its, own its land for its public works facility. So at the end of the day, when we look at what are our expenses and our revenue, what do we look at, we want, I would expect you'd want us to be prudent about ensuring that our expenses don't exceed our revenue, but it doesn't prevent us from doing that. That's a long answer to a short question.
So I guess I'll summarize what my thought is, is that I would like to see where we don't take a tax increase and we don't appropriate the $95,000 for a vehicle that we may not need. And that's kind of where my thinking is.
Is anybody having more questions? I have some questions for staff, just for clarity. Lisa? Since a budget is based on anticipated revenue and anticipated expenditures, is there any significant risk to the city if this proposal by Ed is realized? In other words, do we have fairly good confidence in our numbers for revenue?
We do our best to do a good projection. The thing that makes probably mine and the finance directors have sleepless nights is over our revenue sharing with the state on whether or not we're going to realize those revenues. Those are a critical component of our expenditures each year, supporting our expenditures, especially transportation. We've seen a softening of the economy, so we worry a lot about, I worry a lot about what that will look like in both sales tax, as well field tax and registration sharing that the state does with us. So we try to do a very good job every month of tracking our expenses. I mean, I can show you, I try to do the whole year on here.
I know you do, I was just looking for.
But my point is.
A low, medium, high.
Anytime you start messing with revenues, we have to be really careful about what our expenses are doing. And we saw that this year when we made the decision to buy the public works facility, where we knew that that gap between what we were going to sell, the Dakota property, and what we were going to purchase the land for was significant. We put a halt or a whoa, I call, put the whoa on this expenditures within our street in order to make sure we didn't exceed our expenses.
And my second question, historically, recently, our reserve has allowed us to execute an unanticipated boom land purchase, rad land purchase, Lake's property. It bridged our suspended sales tax revenues from the state. I know it also, in the past, and potentially in the future, funds emergency expenses and capital planning. So with projects like the Honeysuckle-Ramsey intersection and the Atlas in Hayden temporary light, would Ed's plan significantly impact those or marginally impact those, or somewhere in between?
It's hard to see, it's hard to know the answer to that question, right?
That's an answer.
I did want to point out, I did try to show council, for the benefit of the public that's here tonight, you know, the fund balance that we're relying on to support the actions that were done by the city just in this fiscal year. The Cooney County slash Dakota is the difference between the purchase price and the sale price of the Dakota property. So that's before we leaned on our reserves in order to help us cover the months that we did not receive any income from the state and sales tax sharing. So, you know, I think anytime that you're leaning on reserve potentially for covering your operating expenses, it's not something you want your staff to propose that you do any longer than one year.
I understand.
Since I've been here, I've been very prudent about ensuring that the bottom-line number, and especially in our general fund, is that our revenues haven't exceeded our expenses.
My last question is for either you or Ed, since the, it looks like the totality of the recommended cuts exceeds the 3%, why wasn't the 174772 put back into one of the line items? Or what's the plan, I guess? If council approves a 0% tax increase, it looks like we're going to have a $1,747 more income than expenses?
We, in discussions with Councilman De Priest, the proposal, he wanted to present the proposal as provided, with the idea that I would have a chance to talk with the staff and make recommendations back about where we would put that, if we needed to put something back in. Because at the time, when we met, I hadn't had a chance to talk with all the departments.
Would that step prevent us from getting our budget?
No.
Okay. Ordinance completed tonight?
I hope not.
Well, I mean, if it went through, is 1748?
Yeah, well, I think we're going to put it back into the community development books and technical manuals.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Councilman De Priest a question. I was just thinking that a budget is a really fine balancing act, and I'm hearing things on both sides of the scale from what you were saying. So you're saying to cut to 0% for this year, but later, we're going to have to raise the tax base rate. Later, we're going to need to go to the ballot anyways. And then we're also going to have the ability to go for forgone taxes, use this 3% again and then in a following year. How do you see that balancing out? Would this slow down our catch-up rate to be able to, be able to get to where we need to be?
Well, first of all, this budget process, in my opinion, is an estimation. Yeah, you try and get everything as true as you can, you know, you use the term fine balancing act. The budget itself is an estimation of revenues and costs to that. But I've been quite honest with everybody, I've been saying this for three years, okay? Historically, for 30, 40 years now, Hayden has had significantly lowest tax rate in the county, and it has been, it has caught up with us. And we have all of these projects and all of these things coming at us, and especially the sheriff, the slash county, multiple millions of dollars within the next couple of years, according to Commissioner Matarri. I've watched the budget meetings, I've watched Mr. Matarri, Commissioner Matarri say, we want 100% reimbursement. I've watched Commissioner Eberline say it's pay-to-play, okay? And you look at the numbers they gave us, and they intend to get us up to $3 to $4 to $5 million, or they will cut services, is what they've said. So even if we stay with them, we are going to, the reality, the truth is, to the people, let's tell them the truth, that we are going to have to go to them with whatever the numbers may be and ask them to approve it. And again, it gets back to what I've said for ever, it seems like. They, the people will determine what quality of life, quality of services they want to pay for. So in regards, I think to your question, and you say you're hearing things go both ways, I'm saying again, and Lisa's key sentence was something to the effect that she just said, any more than one year is not a good idea. I'm only proposing this for one year, because I truly believe that the city, based on the majority of the issue related to the county and the sheriff, is going to have to go to the people, rather, and basically readjust our base tax rate.
Mr. Mayor, can I correct one comment? I just want to make sure that the record reflects what I did say, and that was that I don't think you want your expenses exceeding your revenues for any longer than one year.
Right.
Great. There any discussion, or someone like to make a motion?
Oh, we're going to deliberate it all here, because.
On the motion. Well, you can deliberate more on the concept, or we can deliberate once a motion's made on the motion itself. So which one are you referring?
I'd like to make a motion.
Hold on, let me.
I do have other thoughts that I'd like to express about this, and I'm just trying to find the correct context for that. And I think it, I'll wait for a motion and see if I can slide it in there.
Okay. You have a motion, Sandy?
Yes, I move to deny this proposal by Councilmember De Priest.
I'm going to second Sandy's, Councilman White's, motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second? Is there any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, this would be my chance, Mr. Mayor.
To discuss the motion?
Oh, to discuss the motion. Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to hold you got, forgive me, I'm trying to figure out when is the right time to bring up some points I want to make on this. So is this just whether or not we're going to go with the motion, or are we going to deliberate on?
This is to deliberate on Sandy's motion to not support Councilman De Priest's recommendations.
Let me go ahead and see if this fits in here, okay? So I'm going to just acknowledge the fact that I am the junior member on council meeting. I've been here the least amount of time, I've got the least amount of experience with the budget. Rest of you have had a lot more time in the saddle to understand how things work. I've never heard from anybody here that it wasn't a good idea that we take the statutory increase, and the reasons for that were, and Councilman De Priest, I'm going to, you know, remind you of your prior words, that we need to increase our base rate. And then the other part about this is that the cost of doing business continues to go up, not only for every taxpayer, but for the city as well, and we don't have to look any farther than what it costs for health insurance, for the staff, and for the city's liability insurance. Those are just two out of many instances. So I'm having a hard, rough time equating that message that's been repeated time in and time again on previous council meetings, where we've discussed money, and what is going on now. I don't like paying taxes any more than anybody else here. I loathe paying them the federal government, partially less to the state, but I think it's really important that we support the city so that it can run its operations and meet the expectations that everybody has as far as, you know, delivering basic services that make this a good community. It's not like the city is going out and asking for a 10% increase for some exorbitant, you know, pie in the sky plan. We're just talking about basic. We're just talking about basic operations. And one thing that really concerns me, and this is part of coming from private industry, is that if you have an executive staff at a company that's nickel and diming you on the correct tools you need to do your job, that's demoralizing. It means that you cannot get your job done, even if they pay lip service to pay you colas or whatever else, but if you don't have the correct tools, you can't do your job. And, you know, it bothers me the fact that if we, if they have cost overruns, they would have to come to us and ask for an ordinance to appropriate more money to shift accounts. To me, it sounds counterintuitive and counter-efficient to the people in our city government to doing their jobs. And the reason why I can say this here is that 3% is not a big ask compared to later on if, like Councilmember White brought up, what if we had to do something like forgone taxes? And that would be a really hard pill for the community to swallow, in addition to the fact that likely we're going to have to float a levy to pay for more law enforcement. So while I understand the expediency of giving everybody a zero tax increase this year, I just, it doesn't logically make sense. And as I said in the last time we discussed this, I would be willing to compromise and go with something less, but not zero, just because of the reasons I state, you know.
Can I respond to that? Yeah, let me ask a question real quick because I have a feeling I may vote tonight. So Tom, so just to be clear, you just talked about cutting a lot of stuff, but at the same time you said you would be willing to not take 3%?
No.
No?
Cutting a lot of stuff, I didn't say cutting a lot of stuff. I said I understand.
Let me rephrase. Let me rephrase. It looked like you were critical of not taking 3%, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, but I thought I also heard you say you are, you would support taking some amount of money.
Yes. And I'll repeat what I said when we discussed this a week ago, I would be content with 2%, which is something that has been proposed as well.
Okay, so just from my perspective, it's, those two things are not synonymous or in other words, I hope that's good enough.
Yes, and I guess I'm playing politics here because I recognize we have a trend going here. I'm trying to find a happy median that gets this council to work together rather than against each other.
Okay, thanks. That's my only question.
Does that answer your concern?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I would just like to say that I am in favor of lowering the taxes in a way that gives, shows the public that we are trying, that we understand times are hard, we want to give some relief, but I feel like the, I believe that this 0% on top of taking away from the sheriff is too drastic.
Understood. Any other comments before you can vote?
Can I respond, please? If you want to comment?
Yeah. You can just vote.
I'd like to kind of respond to some of the things here. These cuts don't reduce any services, that the roads and things like that, the maintenance of the roads and stuff like that. And I'd like to respectfully ask your, and I think you said it, do you feel we're going to have to go to the people within the next year or so for an adjustment to our base tax?
It is likely yes.
Okay.
For law enforcement services.
Okay, so you're not willing to, with regards to the $55 million and Mayor Davis mentioned it, the roads and intersections and things like that, that are also going to need addressing in the next few years, there's not money there for those. So, you know, are we going to have to go add those to a levy, a separate levy to deal with those issues? This is my point. It's most likely, and I'd rather only have to go to the people one time and most likely within the next year. And again, it's me, in my opinion, just being straight and honest with them folks, we've had this situation for forever and it's caught up with us. If you want these services like our neighbors have, you're going to have to pay hopefully nowhere near as much as they do, but you're going to have to take that, all of these services, the sheriff, the roads, what are we looking at as far as our needs to bring us up to a level where as we move forward, we can make reasonable decisions as to whether we take 0, 1, 2, or 3 if any and stuff like that. But I still, I still strongly believe that within the year, we're going to be asking the people for tax increase and, you know, if we start, well, let's do this one for the sheriff, well, now let's go back and let's do this one for the roads, well, let's go back and do this one for, I don't know how many people watch this or how many people are paying attention, but the truth, my truth is that let's take care of it in one fell swoop by being honest, projecting what our needs are and asking the people to approve it. So that's, that's in relation to that. And I talked about this last time, gesture. We want to show the people that we understand and we care. So let's make a gesture and just take 1% or something like that as a gesture to let them, we're not here to, I'm not here to make gestures. Okay, that's political, sorry. Okay? When you say, well, we want to make, we want to look like, we want to let them see, you know, type of thing. I deal with facts, in my opinion, hard, cold facts, and I've expressed it several times, are the hard, cold facts are, we're way behind and we're going to get farther behind. I don't want to, I don't think making a gesture to somebody is the motivation for doing anything. I think, I think we need to do it to be honest with the people and deal with the increasingly precarious situation that the city's in.
Abby, can we reread the motion, please?
The motion on the table is to deny the Councilmember De Priest's proposal.
Okay, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Can I, I would like to ask a question because?
If it's, if it's, if it's going to promote discussion, fine, but I think we're kind of right now, I think we're just stuck in a loop.
Well, it's for clarity, basically, for me.
Okay, thanks.
I want to understand that if, I know the motion's to deny, but if the cuts that are being recommended by Councilmember De Priest are approved, I just want to make sure I understand that it's possible, I'm looking at the implications of that, is it possible that if we do not hire a lieutenant and we don't need a car for $95,000, that we could use that $95,000 to adjust up these amounts that would offset these cuts that Ed is proposing?
I thought that was asked, Dan.
Well, I want to make sure I've got the answer is that's true.
Okay.
Because, because it's directly related to whether I'll vote yes or no on there is, if that's the case, that's important. Part of this is that we have money, we have money to offset these cuts, possibly, if we don't hire a lieutenant.
I think at the end of the day, it has to be a balanced budget, so however you guys want to add or cut, we have to have expenses equal revenues. So I don't know, I'll just be more direct with that question.
But we're talking about making adjustments to these cuts if we needed more money on these proposed cuts by not reopening the budget because we can take money from elsewhere as long as the appropriations meet expenses. And so I guess if we, if we, if we take, we, we spend less on, or no money on this vehicle we can use to offset these cuts. That's my question.
Sure.
Okay, that's all I need to know. Sorry, I have to ask a couple more questions for clarity.
Thank you.
I know, Mr. Mayor, you want to move on and I appreciate that.
No, I want you guys to get your questions answered.
So Councilman De Priest implied we could do the one big beautiful levy to cover everything. Is that statutory allowed?
You can go to the voters with whatever you'd like to ask of them to vote on.
How does that sell historically?
Just, just to add your ask, this is not supporting the motion. A good question.
I don't know.
Well, I'm rebutting the rebuttal and it, sorry, I just want clarity on this. I mean, it's one thing to go to the public for a levy for pay for law enforcement services, it's another one to go pay for streets, it's another one to, you know, get caught up on general expenses. I want to know.
We had, we had a levy in 20, Abby, what year was that, the first one where we created a general fund, 2019? There was a levy for just that, Tom. Some of it was, I believe, was for roads, some of it was for law enforcement.
You had three failures before you had a passage.
Yep, so it is possible, yes.
And I think that that is the hesitation by staff if you were to ask any one of us, and I'll speak for them, by saying, our concern is if we're deferring to a future proposal to the public and that public says no, then we're set back even more so by that decision. So it's a banking on the future that may or may not be there.
Last question. If we take no, that we do not take the statutory increase this year and let's say we have a big gaping hole next year, would that invite the possibility of forgone taxes?
In order to foregone your taxes that you don't take this year, you have to pass a resolution to make those available to you, so.
So the answer is yes.
You could potentially ask for that, but you can only ask for 1% each year. You can't ask for more than that.
Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember De Priest?
No.
Council President Roder?
No.
What are we voting on?
The motion.
Motion to deny.
Sandy's motion to deny this idea.
Okay, okay.
Uh, Councilmember Schaefer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis?
No.
Is there any other motion that needs to be made or this wants to be made?
Motion.
Good motion?
I've motioned to approve my proposal.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, maybe we get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Mayor Davis.
Given that no council member supports my position of last special meeting to take the full 3%, I'm left with a decision to support reducing the 3% by 1%, which to me represents about $3.50 over a year's time to the median Hayden home. My opinion of that is that that's a ridiculous stunt. And so if the council truly wishes to support the emotional reasons for cutting taxes, then my vote is yes.
Clarification, is it your vote, yes?
My vote is yes.
So the final decision is what? Clarity and for the record?
0% increase.
A 0% increase.
And the cuts supported by?
And the cuts for?
Councilman De Priest. That's how, I understood that unless I had that wrong.
That's correct. He made a motion to approve his proposal.
Yes, his proposal, which, okay.
Which is 0% and the cuts he proposed.
Lisa, is there anything else that needs to be discussed as it supports this agenda item tonight or Fonda, whoever wants to answer that? Is there anything remaining for fiscal year 2026 budget planning?
No, I just need to get the appropriation already done, so if I could have that time to do it, I will bring that forward.
Like to call for an adjournment?
Go move.
Adjourn.